Regular meeting for Thursday, October 4th, 2018. If we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Planning Board members present tonight. It's regular member Niles Shore. Shaun Winston is not present tonight. We have the Vice Chair Paul Bovere, regular member Nicole Becto, and alternate member Mike Larue. Mike, you'll be voting tonight in the absence of Shaun. We also have our planning, uh, sorry, Planning Director here. Yes, Planning Director.
Director.
Leejay's here. And we also have our Code Enforcement Officer Dan here. I'd like to open a public comment session right now. It's open to any resident or property owner in the town of Berwick to come forward and talk about anything that's relating to the Planning Board. Please feel free to come forward to the podium and just state your name and your address, please. Public comment session's open. No swearing, Mark.
I'll try. Mark Pendergast, 320 Blackberry Hill Road, Berwick, Maine. We were here before on the last proposal that came before you on this piece of property. And, uh, the water, the issue with the water and the septic over there. Um, we're supplying the water and it can't, the building's not gonna, you're not gonna be able to give enough water. We've run out of water over there. So we, the water comes, the water's pumped out of my, I pay, I pay to pump the water out of the ground. It goes next door to the house beside us, gets purified, then goes back over to my building and their building. That's how it was set up.
It's a well?
It's a well.
You're not on South Berwick over there?
No.
That doesn't go that far up?
No.
What about the septic?
The septic over there is not good. Yeah, I mean, there were times in the past where there's an odor over there. I don't know if you ever pumped it or what, but that was what, that was, really had a problem with that.
Okay. So you're saying, so you're saying that, so you're saying that the owner, you're saying that the owner of the building next door, where this, where this applicant wants to put his business in, they're taking water from you?
Yeah.
Okay. They don't have their own well?
No.
Okay. All right.
And, um, then I thought when we talked about this, maybe last year, these, this, um, you know, this marijuana thing, that, um, you know, it was gonna be, it seems like a multi-use building and, you know, you're gonna have different types of chemicals or whatever they're gonna have down there. And plus have rent out to apartments and whoever else goes in that building. I mean, to me, it doesn't make a lot of sense. It shouldn't be a standalone building or a metal building or something like that. I mean.
Why?
Why? People could get hurt if there was a fire.
A- and you think there's a greater reason for, for fire in that building compared to other buildings? Why? Much more dangerous about that building than other buildings?
I think the chemicals they use.
But do, tell me which chemicals? This is just a fear of yours or do you actually know?
Um, I have, I have a theory.
Do, do you know what chemicals they actually use there?
I just, yeah, I forgot it. I forgot the goddamn chemical.
You, so you don't know the chemicals, but you still worry.
I did know the chemical. I for, it slipped my mind here for a minute.
Okay, well.
So the problem is it just.
It would be helpful from my point of view.
So what do we do about sprinklers then? What do we do about sprinklers or stuff like that?
It would be helpful from my point of view when you remember what the chemicals you're worried about.
Yeah.
If you could let me know at least.
I will.
It's not the whole board.
I will do that.
So we'll know what exactly we're talking about.
Okay.
Generalized fear doesn't really do much for anybody. If you've got a particular issue, I'd love to hear what it is.
All right. How about we try this? Instead of, instead of opening this up, instead, no, instead of opening this up as a public hearing, which is what it's turning into, this is public comment session. Mark, you have, you have as much time as you want to talk. I will write your answers down or your questions down and then we'll bring them up when we get up to the application. The floor is yours.
No, I'm just talking about the water situation.
Okay.
I can't, I can't, they have to come up with a new way of their water. It's just, it's just not, we don't have enough. When it was real dry, what, three years ago, we were filling the goddamn thing up, we're trucking in water. You know, when it got real dry?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it just, it doesn't work. There's never been anything there. You know, I don't care what they do with it. I just, I need that, we need to get the water taken care of. That, that's, it's on the deeds and it just, can't have two other people run out of water. No. It's just, on that piece of property, can't do it. And, and I don't know why we weren't notified. Is it a butter?
Because it's not a public hearing yet.
Okay.
The next step, you'll get it.
If the application's found complete this evening, we would schedule a public hearing and then the butters would get noticed.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Public comment session is open to talk about anything relating to the Berwick Planning Board. Please feel free to come forward. Just state your name and your address, please.
Uh, my name is Jessica Feenstra. I live at 9 Blackmore Road. It's, uh, my mailing address is Southbrook. Everybody knows it as Blackmore Road, but it's actually 5 Shaft's Lane in Broick. Um, my husband and I are also the property owners of the building.
So you own the salon?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And so the well is actually, we paid for the well. It's in our deed. Uh, and I understand that Mark had problems with the prior owners, but there was never word of well running out. Um, but, uh, the right thing to do, because Mark and I have had prior conversations about many things, is, uh, I felt was to call him. My husband and I decided, as difficult as it would be, that I decided to call him anyway and see what we could do to, if there was anything that he needed us to do. I wanted him to know that these are new owners and how can we contribute to this well and what's our responsibilities? And at the time, Mark wasn't feeling well. He said he was home, he wasn't feeling well, and asked me if that was my number and if it was a good number to get in touch with us with. So we did, we do have the well in our deed. It's shared with another property. Um, and so it is something that we actually ha, you know, it's not like it's given to us. Um, it was, when he bought the property, he knew that the well was shared with the other properties. So the septic, we had a septic inspection done. There is nothing wrong with our septic system. What's wrong with the, what's wrong with the building is the prior owners. And everybody has a problem with the prior owners and what they did. And when I spoke with Joey Rousell, Code Enforcement, and Mark, Code Enforcement, I told them both, you know, we wanna be conforming. We just wanna make money and have a business too. And, you know, as far as chemicals, the only thing I can say about the chemicals is, is that, you know, you have chemicals for your trees and your plants and your flowers, you know? And I guarantee you pesticides are probably a little worse than the chemicals they use for things that people eat. Um, but I don't know, so I'm not gonna throw those facts around. And also you have apartment buildings above your garage.
Ma'am, can you please just, can you, can you talk to the board, not, not to anybody else? Address the board.
Okay, yes. So he has chemicals too. So I don't know, you know, there's, there are dangerous chemicals, but in as far as a fire, you know, we don't wanna fire there either because we wanna be successful. So we, you know, if someone said to us, well, you need this, then that's what we've been looking for, is some guidance here. We just want to have a nice building there and, 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 and people that are reliable business and professional. And, you know, we, we don't want any problems with, um, any of the butters. Um, and as far as the marijuana thing, um, it's medical marijuana. I completely support it, so I'm, and I've seen their facility. It's clean, it's neat, it's organized, and, and I think it's very professional. And if it helps people, then that's great. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just for clarification, for our viewers at home, this is not the public hearing on this application. This is public comment session, but we can talk about this stuff. So public comment session is still open, Mark. I'll give you another round if you wanna go, unless there's anybody else in the audience that wants to go and talk about anything that relates to the Berwick Planning Board. I would like to remind you that we're gonna be talking about this application this evening for the applicant, so you're gonna have plenty of time tonight, this evening.
Can I just say something else?
Public comment session's open. Do you have anything?
Very well, I have.
Seeing nobody else come forward, Mark, you have one more shot. We have another public comment session at the end of the meeting.
So just to address, um, my shop, no, our chemicals are kept locked in a separate building. All fuels are set locked in a separate building. We don't have any pesticides on the property. We do a self, but we're, 'cause we're on an aquifier. We use, we don't use any pesticides and we use one herbicide, okay? And that is monitored by South Berwick because of the aquifier. Every year we have to turn in a report. So everything we do is by the book.
I believe so.
Okay? The building's upgraded down there, okay? It has an automatic gate. It has a, everything down there is on camera. Everything down there is monitored 24/7. Um, I don't know what else to say other than this. I'm defending myself because she's attacking my business and I don't, I don't buy it. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I just put it in aside, based, just for the well thing and as a real, if you just bought this piece of real estate and there is a problem with the well, the property disclosures should've stated that. And if they didn't state that there has been a problem with the well, then you have a bone to pick with your real estate agent that represented you.
We really, no, 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 no. We really. We really need to keep this organized here. This is public comment session. We're not even supposed to be talking about the application. This is not a public, this is not a public hearing. We're not gonna go tit for tat and defending ourselves here. This is public comment session. We can save that for the public hearing.
Okay. Well, I, I'm not attacking anybody's business. I'm just, maybe I was thinking that someone might understand going through the steps of agriculture, knowing what's going on. That's all. That was, it was just an example of how someone might feel about things. Um, I'm really having a hard time with Mark Pendergast. Um, I feel actually personally attacked because Mark, I have spoken to Mark personally. I have called him.
You haven't spoken to me.
You told me you were homesick with.
I'm gonna, I, I'm seriously, if we're gonna call this meeting right now, you, you can, you can address me. You can address the board. Ma'am, you can address the board. I, we're not gonna have, ma'am?
That's how it's.
Can you come back up to the podium and address the board, please? I will give you all the time that you need. Please, address the board. We're not addressing the audience.
I called Mark and it's still on my phone. I called Mark and the minutes are still logged on my phone because I know that he would deny it. I called Mark and I talked to him about the well. He was homesick with Crohn's disease. I also know that Mark has his business, his property, on the market. And I also know some of the people that were interested in purchasing it. And I know that he's not against the marijuana thing.
Can I, can I just ask, what does this have, what does this have to do with the Berwick Planning Board?
Because last time, because I feel like, he called Code Enforcement on me, the prior Code Enforcement, and I'm having a hard time with him. And I just wanted the board to be aware that I am concerned about, um, Mark's comments and things. There's really nothing bad about the building. It's been looked down upon since we got there. I mean, there's been a lot of people angry about that building. So we're just trying to pick it up. I mean, the thing's just gonna sit there and rot into the ground if someone didn't get it. We, we think we've done a nice job cleaning it up and we wanna do more. We wanna do more. But for someone to say that our septic is bad when it isn't, it makes us look bad. Almost like it would look bad to say something about somebody else's business. And we don't do that. There's a lot of great businesses around and his is one of them, obviously. But why, why can't we have a chance, you know, in having things there without people saying things about us? So we just like the opportunity, if someone has a concern, to really address the facts, not just hard ti, you know, their hard, their thoughts, that's all. What they think or what they don't know. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing nobody else come forward, close public comment session. Moving on to approval of minutes for September 20th, 2018. Did you have a chance to go through these?
I did not.
Oh, no. So let's take some time for Paul. Get out your red pen.
I have.
Miles, did you have anything?
I just, lucky right now. I haven't seen.
I have something.
Kinda wish Corner Point was open tonight.
I was thinking the same thing earlier. I said it to Paul, actually.
Yes, Nicole.
Um, on page two, under the, the first order of business, there, right above new business, and it says, at the end of that sentence, "Don't use or flush wipeable wipes." I think it's "don't flush flushable wipes."
Yes.
James, it's supposed to say "don't flush flushable wipes."
Well, maybe James is trying to make a statement.
He certainly did.
Yes. All right. So, so, so we're gonna, Matt, Mark, 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 Mark. Come on, Mark. No, we, we'll get to that. We'll get to that. So it's "don't flush wipeable wipes."
Don't flush flushable wipes.
Oh, boy, this is just shaping up to be, all right.
Well, I want the minutes to be accurate.
We're discussing minutes right now. We're not in your application yet. Well, I see nothing else.
I have one small.
What's that?
Right above, uh, the paragraph that Nicole was referring to. Uh, Jay Wheeler said the district is willing to take pump stations as long as they are built to town standards. They are not town standards. They are sewer, Berwick Sewer District.
Right.
Town is no town standard. This is Berwick, that type of stuff. What is that?
Berwick Sewer District standards. Okay. So the motion would be for approval of the minutes as amended.
I move we approve the minutes.
We have a motion.
Second.
Seconded. Further discussion? All in favor?
I wasn't here.
We have, uh, one, two, three, four, approve, and then one abstain. Moving on to a public hearing this evening for a minor subdivision, 195 Blackberry Hill Road map R, or excuse me, Zone R3, the applicant is DeGrapo Builders LLC. Leejay.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The usual board members. Um, nothing has changed since the last time we addressed the application. Uh, I think the only thing that changed was you weren't in this public hearing for tonight and hopefully a final vote. As I indicated at the last meeting and in my memo, that this really is, um, fortunately, a two lot, which doesn't really come under subdivision, but those title attorneys that are involved in this wanted to, um, see this go through the approval process so that they felt more comfortable, I guess, and clearing any title issues that may have occurred because of the way title transferred from the original owner to the other second piece of lot, which has now been split. Technically, there are three lots, but the owner who's been in this property for more than five years was the original lot splitter. Um, so this is really a perfunctory type of process for the board to go through.
Okay. I was a little bit out of order here 'cause we should, I should've asked you that in old business. This is a public hearing just to discuss this application, this minor subdivision on 195 Blackberry Hill Road. Anybody's free to come forward and talk about this application. I'm gonna allow you an opportunity to come forward next. If you wanna talk during the public hearing, that is fine, but I'm gonna give you, open the floor to you immediately afterward. So public hearing just for the minor subdivision on 195 Blackberry Hill Road is open. Seeing nobody come forward, we'll close the public hearing for the minor subdivision 195 Blackberry Hill Road. Moving on to old business, minor subdivision 195 Blackberry Hill Road, Zone R3, DeGrapo Builders LLC. I've already heard from the town planners, so I'll give it to the applicant. Good evening.
Uh, that's, thank you. Isaiah Plant with Kimball Survey and Design. I think Leejay covered it. It's really pretty straightforward, two lot subdivision. Uh, we're just hoping to get a final vote tonight if possible and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. So we found the application complete last time. We scheduled the public hearing. Any questions for the applicant?
I have just a point of clarification of Leejay's explanation of why it had to come as a three lot subdivision. I think the state of Maine law says any lot by an owner that is created, um, into, any one lot creating three or more lots falls under the subdivision law. And they exclude if it's the owner applying, if he has lived on the parcel. But because the owner sold one lot, which was then broken into two more lots, and you were not the owner living on the property, you're under the state of Maine law.
Well, I think there's some opportunity for disagreement there, but it's not a place to argue it. It's pretty perfunctory.
That's, 'cause I read that afterwards and I could see it.
Yes, but the, um, the original, or the current owner of the main parcel that it was split off from does get an exemption. Um, and that parcel is exempt, so, anyway.
And that was the original intent. It was just not executed that way.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. So from our last packet, we have the findings of fact. There's no staff notes from this time around because nothing's changed. Just, we're just taking what Leejay says. So we have a couple votes tonight. The, um, we would vote on the findings of fact and we would vote on the application and hold, approve the application.
I move we accept the findings of fact on the 195 Blackberry Hill Road subdivision.
We have a motion to approve the findings of fact for 195 Blackberry Hill Road.
I, I will second that motion.
We have a second. Do we have any further discussion on this? Seeing none, um, all right, ready to vote? All in favor of approving the findings of fact? Okay, that's five zero. All right, now we move on to the approval of the application for 195 Blackberry Hill Road. Would anybody like to make a motion?
We don't have to approve any of these waivers 'cause there were four waivers requested.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think you did that at the last meeting as part of the completion.
We did?
Yes.
Not certain that you did.
I don't remember voting on waivers.
That would be on the.
I must be missing.
I usually recommend.
Page five of the application?
Thank you, Nicole.
You're welcome.
I believe it was discussed, but I don't think there was a vote.
Yeah, I, I remember Leejay saying it, but I don't remember voting on waivers at all. And they make sense.
And there's no reference in the minutes that we did it to.
No, there isn't.
No, no, we didn't.
I don't remember.
We did not vote on waivers.
Oh, yes.
All right.
Do you have it, Dave?
I do not.
Here.
It's right here, Dave. I got it right here.
I don't have the, I don't know where my application went.
You want mine?
Okay. Thank you, Nicole.
We can share. You're welcome.
All right. So we have, uh, we have four waivers to vote on this evening. Article 6.10, High Intensity Oil Survey. The applicant's looking for a waiver on this.
And I'll make the motion that we waive the Article 6.10, High Intensity Soil Survey on this project.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Article 6.18, Open Space. There'll be no Open Space. The applicant's looking for a waiver from that requirement.
I'll make a motion that we, um, waive Article 6.18 for Open Space. And the reasoning being largely that whole area is pretty Open Space.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's five zero. Article 6.19, Public Use.
I'll make a motion that we waive Article 6.19, uh, to provide public use for these lots. They are two single family lots. This should be not applicable, so that would be my reason.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's five zero. And finally, Article 6.21, Hydrogeological Assessment.
And I'll make a motion that we waive Article 6.21 for a hydro assessment, um, on these two lots because the scale of the project is not really, you should not have that, uh, requirement.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's five zero. Okay. You saved us a lot of heartache, Nicole.
Well, every once in a while. Every once in a while, I do my job.
I will make sure they find their way into the final findings of fact first page.
Thank you, Leejay.
So it is covered.
Okay, and finally, now we're voting for approval of the application.
So I move that we approve the application for the subdivision on 195 Blackberry Hill Road, applicant DeGrapo Builders LLC.
I'll second it. Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's five zero. Okay, did you bring the milars this evening?
Heather, right here.
Okay.
Let me just leave these with Leejay or do you?
I'll leave them with me.
He doesn't show up on time.
Why don't you leave them right here?
Leave them right here and we'll come in to sign them.
Yeah.
I'll pick them up next week sometime.
Yes, that's a good idea.
'Cause I gotta, I gotta finish up a little bit on the findings of fact and perfect. Then they'll be ready to be signed for them as well.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You, Doug?
Don't worry, Isaiah.
All right, continuing in old business, Medical Marijuana Production Facility, 513 Portland Street, RCI Zone, applicant Trican Alternatives. Leejay.
Uh, yes. Um, again, nothing has changed, but Trican Alternatives is seeking approval to locate, um, a portion of their operation at 513 Portland Street. Um, they're currently located, uh, in North Berwick, um, where they do some part of their processing operation. And the other part of the operation will be moved to 513, uh, proposed to be moved to 513 Portland Street, um, which includes, um, preparation of food product as well as, um, office space and, um, meeting space and educational space for, um, applicants, or, or patients, excuse me. Um, you did not, um, find the application complete at the last meeting simply because you wanted to do a site visit of their current operation and see, um, exactly how they operate, as well as visiting the site itself to see how that would fit into what they were doing at their current facility and what they would be proposing to do there. Um, three, one, two, three, four, four board members, four board members, um, made that visit tonight. Um, so there have, um, there is enough folks, I think, that have been educated on this process to discuss it with you tonight. Um, the next steps would be to find the application complete for the purpose of discussion and requesting additional information if you do need to, um, in order to have your public hearing. An additional piece of information that was requested at the last meeting, it was not a, well, it could be a completeness issue, but I don't believe it was actually part of the application requirement, was the need for, um, or the request for a review of their aeration, um, system. And I have, um, been in discussion with an HVAC company, in fact, the one that handles my office's HVAC situation. Um, and they let it slip through the cracks. Um, and they apologized to me today, but they will be reviewing the type of aeration system that he's proposing and having comments for us by the public hearing.
And we got to see what they were working with.
Yeah.
When we were there.
Yeah, so that did not go forgotten.
I think we were also asking for some type of security plan, too.
Um, yes, the applicant discussed that on site tonight. We still have not received a written. narrative. Again, I'm not sure that that is a completeness issue, but you can certainly make sure that we have it, or I can make sure that we have it for the public hearing. And I believe the applicant would be able to walk you through cameras and locations and types of security that they're proposing, as they did during the site visit.
Would you like to have one of us four that were there? We had a pretty thorough walkthrough, both at the originating site with the kitchen and lab is currently located. And then we went to the building where they would like to relocate, and I'm not sure how the other people that were there, but I was impressed with the professional systems that, you know, they're discussing and the way it was set up. It's pretty out in the open, and it's, you know, they seem to be very thorough. And then we went to the new site and looked at that building. It seems to be a well set up, assuming they can meet the performance standards. Seems to be a decent setup. It's the whole right-hand side of that building. So, that was my take on my site visit.
Okay. Do you want to come forward?
Aaron Barth, 31 Wentworth Road, soon to be. So, I want to make some corrections. I don't think it was mentioned, in addition to the kitchen, that we would be doing an extraction lab as well. I think that was left out. So, and our type of extraction is ethanol extraction, as I think Mark was trying to put forth. So, I just want to get that on the record. As far as our security plan, we did put together a security plan and submitted it to the police department. I tried to get it to the chief. He responded once in an email, not really knowing what I was requesting. And then once, I kind of reiterated, or I iterated what we were looking for, I didn't get much response after that. So, I took it upon myself. I went down to the station, dropped off the security plan, hoping for a review and a sign-off, just saying that, you know.
Received.
Our plan was received, and they understood it, and it looked okay. And no response.
Have you given a copy of that plan to Lee J or to James?
I did not. And as a matter of fact, that, you know, that's my fault. I should have had it prepared, but it was a crazy day. So, I apologize for that. I can't get that.
Make sure James gets it here in the office.
It's in our computer.
Yeah.
So, but it was pretty thorough, you know, just designating exactly what we're going to be doing as far as security goes. And I did have a security company come by today to go over the building and review exactly what would be done.
Could you talk about the water issue? And maybe this is a good question for the owner, and we can allow the owner of the building to come up here and talk about the water issue. How much water are you going to be drawing? You mentioned before, just a bathroom, right?
So, we have upstairs, we're going to have a public restroom. I don't think anybody saw that, but in that meeting room, that's separate from where our patients will be meeting, there's an additional meeting room and office area that's separate from the rest of where patients will be. There's a public restroom. We would be using that restroom as a public restroom. In addition to downstairs, in the kitchen, we would be using water in just a standard commercial kitchen setting. We do use quite a bit of water when we're washing pots and pans, you know, but it's not like watering plants either. But it's your standard kitchen, commercial kitchen usage. And then, as far as lab usage, it's pretty minimal, just, you know, rinsing out, you know, washing glassware and stuff like that. It's minimal, but the most usage would be in the commercial kitchen. As far as the well and all that, I have no idea. I just, you know, I'm looking to rent the space, that's it. I don't know of the details of the well.
Do you want to come up?
Jeremy Feenster, the property owner. I live at 9 Blackmore Road. As far as the well, I don't know what the gallons per minute is. Maybe Mark does, I don't know. And we did remove one of the residents, which I would think, and maybe you can back this up, I don't know. I would think he would use less water than a tenant would. So, I think if anything, we probably going to, we probably will reduce the amount of water used, would be my guess, compared to before. But I don't know. If something you could speak to, I don't know.
Do I name again? Aaron Barth? Okay, good. All right. So, as far as the water usage goes, we're going to be using, I think it's a 15-gallon, three-bay sink. So, each bay is 15 gallons, and we do your standard wash, rinse, sanitize, setup, and we're probably doing that, you know, twice out of a day. So, we're probably using 10, 20, 30, 60 gallons, 60 gallons of water a day, plus, in addition to the restroom, so whatever, standard restroom. So, let's add in, you know, maybe five restroom breaks at, you know, five gallons in total. So, maybe 65, 70 gallons max a day in water usage, would be my guess. That's a ballpark guess.
And the...
I don't know what a resident.
No, 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 that's fine. And the well is shared?
Yes.
You want me to come up? Yeah.
I'm sure you want me to go back and ask.
It's for our viewers at home, so they can hear you.
So, the well is shared, but like I said, it's part of our deed.
Where's the well located?
It's located on, it's located on Mark Penegas' property.
And it's in your deed that it's shared?
Yes, it's shared with us, another home, I believe, and his building, so the home beside us. But when he bought the property, it was still like that, and when I bought the property, it was like that. And we did, we did call Mark and ask him, you know, because my husband brought up the fact that, you know, there's got to be some sort of maintenance, and we wanted to be part of that. We're not just looking to leach off him. We want to do it, we want to pay for our own. But, you know, to say, go and build a well, I mean, that requires a lot more. The first step we made was, I mean, there was, there was a lot of people living in that building that weren't even supposed to be living there. So, not to mention, there's someone claiming our address there that has been there for years that doesn't live there. So, you know, there's a lot that was going on at the building. But as far as the water, I've never, I never heard anything from any of them, and believe me, the tenants that were there complained about everything. We had them move out as soon as possible because it wasn't up to par. But this is going to be a lot less water, I would say, because there is not growing at the building. There's no growing at the building. So, I don't think that it would use more than the four people that were in that family that were living in that apartment that we let go of, because we wanted to be conforming, and we want to have commercial there. You know, it was two units, two residential units there, as well as all the other, the salon and all the other offices. So, but there's never, we never heard of any problem in our, in our, and actually...
I have your disclosures right here. Dave, if you want to look at them, these are the property disclosures for that parcel, and the top section there is the water, and it says it's a drilled well used between the three properties and has never had a quantity issue on the disclosure, so.
And also, if you look on Mark's property disclosure for his property that he just listed, you will see that as well, he has nothing listed as problems for his well. So, I don't know how it went dry or how he brought water in, but if he did, then that probably should have been on his property disclosure as well.
Can I ask, oh.
A property disclosure is when you put your property up for, on the, on the building that you have for sale right next door that the well's on.
I didn't pull it off.
All right, Mark, I'll give you a chance to, just write these things down. Just, Mark, just, Mark, just write these things down, and then come up there, and you can answer these questions. Let's just kind of keep it organized.
Yep, no, and I'm just...
What about your septic?
We already, we, I thought we discussed that already. There was inspection done when we bought the property, and I mean, if everybody wants another one done, I mean, we could do it, but we had the tanks emptied, two tanks emptied, because we have two tanks. So, as soon as we moved in there, the person that lived there before, nope, didn't take care of their stuff, but we had it inspected and emptied, and we're doing a really good job. And, you know, we, you know, I have, like, part of my family, my business is in there. My daughter, my daughter goes in there, my grandkids are around there, I'm around there all the time. If there's something dangerous or, or that could spread bad things, you know, I, we wouldn't be there. So, you know, we're taking care of the building. We have a, you know, this was just, this is our investment. So, I just, nothing's wrong with anything that's there. And if there is, we're not aware of it, and we would want to get it fixed if there was. So, as far as the well, I would think there would be less water being used, so everybody would be happy. I'm not really sure. I mean, because there's also, you know, there's two, two tanks there in the driveway, then the well is over on his property. I don't even know, you know, maybe they, it wasn't a spot for the well at the time. The property got divided so many times from the prior owner, and so many things happened with it, and just, everybody's just angry that's around us there, and we're trying to break that. Like, flowers are out, balloons are out, signs are out. I mean, people even said, oh, you might want to put a sign up that says, "New business owners," you know, new owners. I'm just, we're really trying here, but we need a little support from some other business owners in town, maybe, or something. Some positive reaction.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I cover on this topic a little bit?
Yeah, and then I want to ask Mark to answer those questions.
Sure, just a couple things that I want to just get on record. For the last meeting, as far as the usage of the building, we were talking about the new law that's coming up with 1539 and the medicinal storefront. And last meeting, I was asked if we would ever, you know, try and apply for recreational. And at that time, at that meeting, I did say that I did not have that in my mind. However, it kind of got me thinking about it, and I would consider applying for a recreational application at that location, under the condition that I maintain my business the same as, as it is now, for the sole reason of being able to provide medicine to people who are afraid of obtaining a medical license for specific reasons, whether it's public reasons or...
Does that, I'm sorry, I don't need to be naive, but does that even exist?
What's that?
People who are afraid to go get a medical...
Absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely, hands down. I have people show up all the time that want to get medicine that I have to turn away, because, you know, I'll use an example. I've had two principals of high schools want me to help them, and I've had to turn them away, because they don't want to become patients, because they're principals of high schools. So, you know, they're public, they're in the public eye of, you know, being judged. So, they choose not to get a medical certificate. So, they don't want it on record. As well as, I've had many discussions with law enforcement, with potential patients that want to get their medical license, but they won't, because they're afraid of getting their firearm taken away from them, which I've, I personally haven't spoken to a chief in regards to this in one of the local towns, but a patient did speak to a chief, and he stated that that's just impossible, that that won't, that wouldn't happen, because there's HIPAA rules, you know, and that's violating a patient's rights. So...
So, you're thinking of doing recreational there, too?
I would consider, at the time where we would be able to apply, to apply for a rec license to open up to public over the age of 21.
Because you know you'd have to come back to the planning board.
Oh, no, of course. Yeah, no, no.
You're not going to grow there.
No, 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 no. So, it's, I just wanted to get it on record stating that, you know, it is a consideration of mine.
All right. Well, at this point, yeah, no, I appreciate you saying that, but at this point, it's really, it doesn't really have to deal with anything with the application at this point.
Just wanted to get it on record.
All right. Now, Mark, you want to answer some, you had, looks like you had some things that you wanted to answer. Go ahead. Yeah, yeah, come on, yeah.
So, the first thing I'd like to do is apologize, because she's cleaning the place up. I have no ill will against anything you're doing. I think it's great.
Now, Mark, I just want to let you know, I'm going, I'm going against, I'm going, you're going to walk a very fine line here, because this isn't a public comment session, and normally, we don't open this up to a butters here.
You're right, I'm sorry.
But I'm going to, we're going to walk a very fine line.
Right.
Okay, go ahead.
I have no problem with what goes on there.
Ask, let's talk about the well.
My big problem is, is I just want the water situation. If I'm going to expand my business, she's going to expand it, who knows? The well has been a bug in my bonnet for 20 years, it's been nothing but a hassle. And it just seems to me, now's the time to get it straightened out. It's all I care about. Because she's right, she's fixed the place up. The septic doesn't smell anymore. I mean, I don't have any argument with what she's doing.
Well, then you guys should work that out. You guys should work that out.
Somehow the town let a moron.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, tonight, what we're going to, tonight, what we're going to look at is, is seeing if the application's complete, and then we're going to schedule a public hearing. And then we'll schedule a public hearing. He's not even listening, so.
Can I, can I provide some history?
Yes.
Can I speak to...
I mean, you're the property owner, I mean...
I just, I just wanted to say that, you know, when we bought the building, you know, my wife, she knows Mark, and so I asked her to call him and just, you know, because I don't believe in getting something for nothing, and I don't think Mark should subsidize our business. So, I asked her to call him and just, you know, say, we want to share the expenses of the well, because we really weren't told much about the well. So, I figured she could call him, we could talk about it, and we'd straighten it out. So, I have offered that I, I do want to, you know, take care of any expenses that have to do with the well, you know, a portion of it, my fair share, and I would do that. So, I just want that to be known, that I don't expect him to pay for everything if that's what is happening.
Well, let's turn it over to code, and let's turn it over to planning. Do you see an issue with water source here, with water supply?
From my perspective, I don't. The applicant has water at the property. The issue that is in front of us is a civil matter that is between the two property owners, and really not an issue for the planning board to be involved with, simply because the applicant is being serviced by water. Whether it's adequate or not, or it's impacting the butter, it's been like that for 20 years. That is really a civil matter between those two folks and not something for the planning board to be involved with.
Thank you.
Is there a requirement, if you could just, just reiterate, is there a requirement for, we asked for a security plan, but is there a requirement for a security plan to make it, to make the application complete?
No. That would be, that's another item above and beyond your submission requirements that you have requested of him. It is not part of the application process to find the application complete.
So, what, being here a long time again, I have some, and I've lived in that neighborhood. The history on the three pieces of land that we're talking about, they are along the new Route 4. There's a house south of Salmon Falls Nursery, Salmon Falls Nursery, and the building which we're hearing the application for tonight. And that was bought as one lot, I believe.
No, no, it also goes down to Battran. What Battran is?
Battran, yeah, behind there.
It goes down there, too.
Yeah, so there were four, all right. But that's, that's not in question tonight, though, that lot. But anyway, it was one lot, and when, when the old Route 4 was terminated and the new one was built, it made a really thin slice of land between the old Route 4 and the new Route 4, and it was owned by one person, and then it was subdivided, and what I understand now is... And then it was subdivided, and what I understand now is four lots, but I think that was before zoning went in. And I can't remember a subdivision ever being filed on those four lots, ever, and that's in, you know, 30-plus years. But in any case, it, it became four lots, and they were individually sold. One became a house, one became Salmon Falls Nursery, and one is the shop, the building that these people have bought. And because the well was put in the middle lot on the Salmon Falls Nursery, there, there has to be, on both the deeding lot, which would be Salmon Falls Nursery, and the receiving lot, they have an easement on Mark's land for water to come under the street, as it turns out, it's a public street, to get to their place. I'd like to read those easements to see if it's Salmon Falls Nursery, if they have the responsibility of providing power to pump that water to the receiving site.
Well, that sounds like a civil thing, Paul. Paul, that sounds like, that sounds like a thing that if there was an issue, it would be, it would be brought up in court.
But Dave, on findings of fact-
Right.
Has sufficient water available for the reasonable foreseeable needs of the development, usually considered to be 10 years? And if water gets shut off from the sending to the receiving easement sharers, and I think there's a third one also, I guess, you know, the, the first lot, then we have a problem. And I've seen this, not with water in this town, but I've seen it with sewer, where you have a leach ban on someone else's lot, and it fails, and then you get the squabble, and the town has to be involved in fixing it. I mean, that has happened in this town.
I would tend to agree with Lee. I don't see how this is a planning board issue. It's a serious problem. I hope they work it out. But how is this-
One of the standards, sufficient water for 10 years, and if the water fails, whose responsibility is it?
Well, it could be true of any lot. How do we, you know?
They're usually all contained in one lot, and the one owner takes care of it. It is a civil issue, I'll say.
There's no reason for us to believe at this point that there's a problem with a source of water for the next 10 years. Nothing has been presented that I can see that shows-
Well, I don't agree with that.
I think what he's saying, no, but, Mark, where have it, well, hold on a second. I think what he's saying is that he wants to see the deed because he wants to believe that, what if Mark wants to shut the water off, and then they have no water over there?
I'm looking at the deed right now, and I don't see a well mentioned on it at all, so.
I haven't heard anybody disagree that there's a requirement-
Which deed?
This is the deed for the property that they purchased, and there's no well-
So it will show that they have an easement from-
There's no well mentioned on it.
I don't see how that's an issue for us.
Really?
There's no well, yeah, no, I was, that's what I was looking at.
Why did you say that?
We need to anticipate what illegally may go on.
We have, all right, all right, we have five conversations going on right now. We have five conversations going on right now. Does it need to be in the deed, Lee J?
Does it, that's, that's a, that's a, yeah, I mean, it's a legal issue. If it's, I mean, usually, it's a deeded easement that shows up in the deeds that says they have the right to get the water. I think this is going to require a closer look. You know, we're going to need to, I, I think Paul's on the right track. I would like to see the deeds for all of those properties and review them and see where we're at. But again, I think, deep down, bottom line, it's a civil issue. They do have water to their property right now, they are taking water. Where I do differ with, with Paul on this is that if the pump shuts down, if the pump is intentionally shut down, that's not our problem. They have water. They have water by means of a well. It's, that is a civil matter. That is, these folks having to go to Mr. Penegast and say, why did you shut our water off? We're going to take you to court. We have a right to access that water, provided it's in the deed, provided there is something that says they have the right to that water. And it sounds like, maybe not.
All right, ma'am, you wanted to say something about the deed. You could come back up, please. You wanted to say something about this.
I have both property disclosures with me for 513 Portland Street and 511 Portland Street. There's never been any issue with the well. That is documented, from Mark Penegast LLC, and also from us. I mean, from our building, the prior owners. The well, the water shut off is on our property, and yes, he's paying, but he told you himself, he's paying to pump the water to our property and all the other properties. But we're also paying for it to get pumped back because it gets filtered at our property, because we have the high-tech filter system at our property. So, and when Mark bought the property, it was divided already, and the wells were shared.
There's water going there right now.
And you know what? The water's really good because we own a hair salon.
Okay, so the water's good, the water's there right now, it, it meets the requirement, but you don't think that it meets the requirement?
Well, we, we should ensure, I mean, we've always been, as a planning board, we try to provide, make sure there's good water and sewer for each lot or use. And it actually is part of, it's item 13, and our findings of fact, has sufficient water for 10 years.
But what is the difference between that and getting water from this, water from the town?
Because the difference is, it is a, it is a civil matter. I will agree with Lee J on that. But if there's no easement, and Nicole looked at the deed, she did not see an easement on-
On their deed. I didn't look at Mark's deed, so.
Yeah, we need to look at Mark, because Mark will, will be providing the easement.
But that's, that's neither here nor there, that's, that's up to them, yeah.
Well, usually, a clear deed for the purposes the lot is being applied for, you know, you cover that, I think.
This isn't about the well, anyway, with Mark.
All right, well, I'm not going to get, I don't want to get into a-
It really is not appropriate.
All right, let's just focus on, let's just, there's water that's going there right now. We agree that there's, it's a little bit sketchy, but there's water going there right now, and it's a civil matter. But for the performance standards, it meets that.
For the time being, it does.
For the time being, it does.
But for currently.
For the time being, it does.
I'd like to see this resolved, anyway, to make sure we've covered that base as a planning board, that there is, the easements are in place on the deeds, so that legally, these people have a well that's going to provide water. That's all I'm asking for.
And I would agree to that, because the finding of fact states that the water is being provided by a private well. Doesn't say where or whatnot, but certainly to review that, to make sure that it is being, if it is being provided from offsite, that there are easements-
In, in place to continue that for 10 years.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, his deed isn't on there, so.
So you would amend the findings of fact?
I think first, we're going to need to review the deeds and see what there is. And then, if need be, yes, I would, rather than making a one-sentence statement that the water that has been met because it's being serviced by a private well, I'd need to expand that to indicate that the well is located elsewhere and being provided from offsite, and, you know, expand that so that there's more, much more in-depth finding to that statement for you to act on.
What's your recommendation at this point?
I, I would recommend tabling this application until we can review that and take a look at least, you know, what the deeds say. It is a civil matter, but I think in order for this board to feel comfortable that there is sufficient water to service the site, we need to make sure that, that the deeds do allow that.
And what, how are we going to go about that?
I am going to have to get the deeds from the York County Registry of Deed for Mark's property.
I can get those to you tomorrow morning.
So Nicole can get everything for me. She has really quick access, and I will take a look at them.
Couldn't we find the application complete, but, I mean, we're not voting on the findings of fact, so we don't have to accept findings of fact, and that gives you time to do that without holding them up for another?
The only, the real conservative side of me says the only issue is, is that, you know, we have to, one of the submission requirements would be, you know, is there water? It's a, it's a 20, it's a loaded question. There is water, but now we're getting into, you know, is it properly being serviced? So.
You should talk to, I'm sorry, you should talk to the applicant, and then he could come forward and, and talk about it. Just, you guys huddle up.
I just want to say something to the property owner, there's something quick if I could.
No, you can't.
Talk to, can you just talk to the applicant, please? We're just, because we're trying to just figure this out. Just talk, talk to, just talk, just talk, and he can come up.
Because really, 13 and 14 are both affected. 14 is, will not cause an unreasonable burden on an existing water supply.
Right, I mean, I think that's-
Although both sets of property disclosures say that there's been no quantity issue.
I agree, we need to take a look at the deeds. I don't think 14 is the same issue. I mean, from what I heard, it isn't going to create a burden because it will be no more than it has been in use for the last 10 years.
Yeah, I agree with that, yeah.
Correct.
But, don't we normally require deeds as a part of an application? Or is that just sort of tradition?
No, subdivisions, you require them. I don't believe you do in your conditional use application process, which maybe for the future, we'll want to talk about expanding the requirements for that.
In which case?
Conditional use application.
Why would we not find this complete, then? If deeds are not required, then?
Because it's not the deed issue, it's about the water, and is there sufficient water on the property?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So, so is, is the concern that there's sufficient water to supply my specific needs?
Yes.
Or, because it's, it's clear that there's water supplied to the building and all the current tenants in it, correct? That, that's pretty much understood, right? And-
At the moment.
And that the concern is that there is potential insufficient delivery to the building to satisfy our needs? Is that the, the holdup here?
Yes.
Okay, so, is it, is there, in, in what sense does it make to, well, does it affect the hold, or, or the ability of my application to be approved with the, the findings that there is potential delivery issues to the building?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a problem, yeah.
Okay.
Is it because of number 13, because of the assurances that there is sufficient water?
But, but it sounds like, I mean, if, if we just put down the facts, and we see that it is a civil thing, but there's an agreement between the two parties, or three parties, the way I've heard it tonight, we just note it, you know, in the findings of fact.
Where's the agreement? Where's the agreement?
I don't know if there, one exists on paper, but we should make sure that there is sufficient water for a reasonable foreseeable future.
That's why we need to get the deeds. That's why we need to get the deeds, to make sure. But if, Nicole's looking at the deeds, and you say that there's, they're on there, she's saying they're not.
Well, no, I was looking at her deed, but it might be on Mark's deed.
On Mark, that's right.
The easement's going to be on Mark's deed, not her deed.
It's on mine as well.
The new one, you might. I only have your old one, and it didn't, it wasn't in the description for your old one, it didn't mention a well. So the one that you got when it was conveyed to you, it may have been added there. The thing about Mark's deed is that he's got all these lots on it. It's not just his one lot. And I see easements, but I don't see-
How many lots is he providing water for?
Well, I don't, there's, there's three lots on this one deed. There's 211 Route Four, there's New Dam Property, two and three, and then there's 332 Blackberry Hill Road, but that's not-
My recollection is that it supplies the water to the left of the building, the house, to the, the left of his building, as well as their prop, and, and Mark's property and their prop, the property that we're looking to move into.
What I think it is, is that it's a wrong deed reference.
Those are the three properties that I think is in, in question.
And it doesn't, he doesn't supply water to Battran or Bat, whatever, behind you, on the old Route Four.
He supplies water to, he supplies water to the house, to the left of him, and, and pumps water to their property, but-
Yeah, there's a little racetrack out behind the building.
So we're talking about three particular properties.
The little racetrack for the remote-controlled cars or something?
That's where that man lives in, yeah.
I think that's gone now.
That's gone, so there's nobody living there, then?
There's no, there used to be a trailer back there, that's gone.
Yeah, so there's no residential, so Mark Penegast is not providing water to that site either.
I think the shut offs are on our front corner, there's three of them, and I think the trailer that was there, that's the transfer station.
I mean, it may seem simple, just having a, a document written up on the front side.
Well, no, I think, with a document, sure, but, I mean, it should be in the deed, and I think that we're all looking on cell phones, and we're pulling up old deeds and new deeds, Lee J? I, I think, you know, I, I think we need more clarification. We need the actual deeds that are on file, that, because we're looking at old deeds, new deeds. I'm not going to go off of looking at a cellphone and then make a decision based on it.
Correct.
So I will make, I'm, I'm going to make a motion to table this application, looking for a second for discussion. You don't necessarily have to agree with me, but looking for a second for discussion.
I would continue discussion before, because on a tabling motion, you're not supposed to have discussion, from a technical standpoint.
You can have, you can have a discussion on, on whether or not you think I'm wrong to table the application.
I would have that before an actual motion, or you could actually make a motion to postpone the application to a specific date certain, which would be the next planning board meeting, and you can have discussion on the postponement.
I would like to po, stand by.
We're getting out Robert's rules?
No.
I'm actually giving a lecture on Robert's rules to a couple of you.
Are you?
I know these by heart.
I'd like to make a motion that we- postpone this application and continue discussing on October 18th, 2018.
So if we disagree with you, are we, what's the?
Just looking for a second for discussion.
I'll second.
Okay, seconded, seconded by Niles. Okay, discussion on my motion. I'm sorry, Niles, I'm sorry, Paul.
Niles is the only one that says-
Sorry, Paul.
Nicole did the research, she can second.
Sorry, Paul. Niles, Paul's made the second, so. The reason I made that motion was because there's just, it's just, it's too up in the air, and I don't want to make a hasty decision just to push something through. And I'm, I want to protect the applicant, I want to protect the property owners, and the planning board as well, making the right decision.
My question is, are you implicitly or explicitly saying we also need to postpone a public hearing? Or can we hold a public hearing on the 18th as well?
Well, we haven't, we haven't, we can't hold a public hearing because we haven't voted the application complete.
Correct.
That was beginning my question.
Correct.
I just feel like we're going to be back here in two weeks, and, and we should be able to have, I don't know, whether, whether or not it's you or the town attorney or somebody gets that information.
Well, I-
And then, and then you can put it in staff notes.
I assume, probably a wrong assumption, I would assume you can give me permission, but I can also send Steve an email very quickly in the morning seeking permission to talk with the town attorney about this and see what their thoughts are as well. I deal with all of these attorneys, so I know them, but I just don't want to rack up a bill for anybody.
No, I agree. We need to make the right, the right decision, make sure everything is, is, is done the right way.
That's right. I mean, Nicole will help me, she'll get the deeds, for all the properties and that.
Yep, I'll have them to you tomorrow morning, yep.
I will review them, I will have a conversation, both with Steve to get permission and with the town attorney, to see what their thought is on this as well.
Can, can we?
For, for my piece of mind, just ask them if, according to our performance standards, if, if water currently flowing to a site is sufficient, or should we plan that would keep flowing without any issues as you, you know, as time rolls forward?
And I'm good with that. If it doesn't say anything in the deeds, and if the, if, if our town attorney looks at that and says, there's water going there right now, they have some type of agreement, and it's fine, then that's fine, it's met the performance standard.
And that's how it looks when we own the building, so why is it relevant now and irrelevant before, you know what I mean?
Because this is, because of the issues that were brought up with the well and all that this evening, so we're going to table this, I'm sorry, postpone this application, that's the motion, and we have a second. Do we have any further discussion on postponing the application to October 18th?
I just want to say that I am not in favor of postponing application completeness, because physically, the application is complete as I see it, and that's all I just want to say.
That was my question.
But we're not voting on that. We're voting on postponing the application and continuing discussion.
Because the application isn't complete? Why, I don't understand why we can't-
Because there's uncertainty about one of the performance standards.
But we're not voting on performance standards, we're voting on application completeness. The application is complete.
These are findings, these are a draft of findings of fact, so we're not voting on those.
Yeah, we're not voting on findings of fact, we're not voting on conditions, we're not voting on application.
We can't vote on findings until we've had a public hearing.
We are voting on an application has been submitted to us in a complete format, which it has. We are now requesting things that are not in our application. I think it's setting a precedent.
That's correct.
And, and if we want those things, then we need to add it to our application process, and that's my fin, that's how I stand.
All right, I will, okay. If we have the same issue then next week, or in two weeks from now-
Then we throw it out.
I will withdraw my motion to postpone the application to the 18th. In two weeks, this should give us plenty of time, we'll have the public hearing, we should have our answers. should have our answers. Now, in two weeks, we don't necess, the clock is running, you know, we don't necessarily have to vote on it that night if we still have some more answers-
Right.
Or questions.
I mean, the, the application can be complete, even if every article has not been-
Right.
I mean, we're just, we just wanna look into this, this article.
And that's our job.
And it's covered in the application.
Okay, because the application, because there's nothing that the applicant has to, the applicant doesn't even know about these findings of facts, really, necessarily.
They fill out an application, is it complete?
They fill in an application, so, okay.
It's complete, I mean, the-
So, then I would suggest what you could do if you wanted to go that route, find the application complete, and then postpone further action on the application until-
I agree with that. That's what, that's exactly what I agree.
Why would we just not go ahead and hold the public hearing in two weeks?
Because it starts the clock on-
So?
That's fine.
If you wanna do that, you can.
And we can hold another public hearing, then, if we're still sixty days.
I mean, if the applicant doesn't want to take that risk, I can appreciate that.
If you want to do that-
But if the applicant is willing to take the risk, that, that we may end up voting no, and, and I also accept that.
So, can I address as the applicant?
If the applicant is willing to go forward, I think we should go forward, but, you know, I'd like to hear from you.
Yeah, I, I mean, look, it, it is a risk for me right now, because currently I'm paying rent. You know, I put a deposit on the space, I'm paying monthly rent, it's not cheap, we can't necessarily afford to be operating, not operating, in a space that we can't even use. You know, I'm stressing out, as it is, not being able to be in there now. So, you know, if, if that's gonna affect me for another two months, I kinda need to know, just from my own personal business standpoint. It, it, it's a massive impact on my business and my ability to move forward if it's gonna be postponed. If, if, if a realistic, I want you guys, you know, as the board, to be as realistic as possible for me, the applicant, to, to say, "Look, this is a potential, you know, one month, two weeks, two months situation, because I need to know, you know, do I need to withdraw, and, and, you know, what am I doing?" That's what I need to know.
Well, we find out to, let's, we're gonna talk about a public hearing in the applic, we have, we have to find the application complete first.
But it would be useful if in two weeks you can tell us why you think you have water on this property.
Why I think I have water?
Yeah, in two weeks, not tonight. So, it, it might be helpful if you went to talk to your attorney who did whatever, who wrote up the, the lease agreement, to find out why you all believe that you have an assurance that you will have water on this property. Do that and come back in two weeks and give us that answer, please.
I, I'm confused, I, I apologize, but I'm confused with that.
There is a legal question here as to whether or not this property has legal right to continue to expect water to come on it. The answer may be absolutely yes, I don't know. What we, what we are saying is, nobody has shown that to us yet, we need to see that.
I understand, but, but during my lease, that was an irrelevant, it, it was an irrelev, irrelevant issue when I, when I signed my lease.
Highly relevant.
Right.
We're gonna get that, we're gonna get that from the town planner.
If it's not on the deeds, and then, let's say Mark sells his property, and then, this is, I think this is what it's coming down to, is if, if it's not on the deeds, and there's nothing saying that there's no right to it, and if he sells it in a year, then you could be up the creek with no water, and that's what they're trying to-
With a five-year lease.
Right. So, I mean, if it is on the deeds, we just have to see it, that's, that's all they're saying, we just wanna see it.
Excellent.
If it's down on there, then there's no problems, everything's gonna, gonna be fine.
Or go drill a well, connect your filtration system to that well, and say-
So-
And if the building owner has, if you have a copy, if you have a copy of the deed that shows that, send it to the applicant, and he can send it to Lee J.
Yep, and that's it.
This is the last thing that ever, anybody's gonna say on it. I'm sorry, go ahead, just come up here, so, for people at home.
I, I have an occupancy permit for the property. When I moved there, like I said, there's two residential and a salon, and then seven offices, okay? Seven. So, we wanna lease half the building to Trican, and then I want a salon and spa, and then there's one residential there, because I wanna keep it, because right now, as it is, we're paying really high taxes on something that people are arguing about what's in our deed. I mean, we legally went through a title, a title search and all of these things when we bought the property, we already paid for this, so right now, we're just looking to pay rent. We didn't get a great deal on the property, we bought it for, you know, the value that it was for sale. And so, I don't understand, if we have an occupancy permit, we have the salon there, it has, it had two residential's there, and I was just told, you know, hey, I said, "I'll let go of one of the residential's, I don't mind," because we-
The town wanted us to do that.
Yeah, they wanted us to keep it more commercial, you know, but it's RCI, residential, commercial, industrial, right? So, now we have one residential unit there, and we want the rest to be commercial, but I don't understand this question of water, it's in our deed, so if you hold, I mean, let's just say, what if someone, what if-
I haven't seen it, I have not seen it, I believe you, I believe that you're saying that it's in the deed, I believe you're saying it's in the deed.
Yes, I understand that, so, but this is, this is all I'm asking, was, it wasn't part of the application process, so this is what I'm asking. Let's just say, for instance, somebody else, let's say it, I don't know, next door to our building now, comes into the town and files an application for the same as what Aaron is filing for. So, what if they have everything they know they need right up front, you know, I mean-
Actually, you know what?
This is the question I'm concerned about.
I understand what you're saying, and I think that this is the best thing to do, is to save this for next week, because those were draft findings of facts, we are just looking to see if the application is complete. We can have, we can talk water all night, in two weeks, and we can talk, we can talk about the water in two weeks, but we have to keep things focused, and we're just looking, is the application complete? I move that the application is complete.
I second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's five zero, okay. We wanna schedule a public hearing for the eighteenth. Does that work for you guys?
And by that time, hopefully, we'll see the deeds and make sure there's, there's good, there's legality of you pulling water from another lot, and you will have water into the future.
If it's in your deed, copy it and make sure it gets to James and Lee J.
And I would-
So we can see it, that's all we're saying.
I would bring in the disclosure.
We need to see that it's in somebody's deed.
There's a confusion between disclosures and easement here.
No, wait, yeah, I understand, but-
Give it to James. Yes, James, for this minute, and, and that will be fine.
Alright, so the, the public hearing is scheduled for-
Aaron, you're gonna get your security plan to James as well, right?
The public, the public hearing is scheduled for October eighteenth at six thirty. Okay. Public comment session, and public comment session's open to any-
I've heard enough from the public tonight.
Resident or public, or, or property owner in the town of Berwick, to come forward and talk about anything that relates to the planning board, public comment session is open.